Really?
Well, I wish I would have been told that because I've heard your gag every single time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes for March meeting to be approved. Did you get that?
Yes.
I'm sorry. A little wall of favor. Okay. Bills to be approved for payment.
I made a motion to approve the bills for March, April, or in April.
Is it March?
March.
March?
Yeah, March.
March? No, we did March last time. It's April. It's April bills. We're in April.
Well, I know we are, but...
We do them the month we're in.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Okey dokey. Now, pass the ordinance on the J breaks. I thought we'd already done it.
Well, we bought it two months ago, but we didn't have enough agenda to pass. So, anyway, I think it just got forgotten last month.
Last month, Larry and Kay weren't here, so we tabled it.
Oh, that's right, yeah. So, unless there's some revisions to it, then it'll just be a motion to approve and waive all required agreements.
Okay, do we need to talk about it or anything, or just...
If you have any questions, or if we need to make any changes, or it's up to council if there's...
Do you guys have any question?
Looks like to me the sign's already up over there anyway.
The what?
The sign's already up.
We're moving to put a fine in with it. Correct?
Yeah.
We're doing a bigger sign and a fine. That's the difference, because people won't stop doing it.
There is a fine?
Yeah, there's one. So, fine on the sign though.
Oh, the fine on the sign, okay, so we don't need to...
So, when we have the sign made, you'll be, we'll put a...
Yeah, so the idea was to put a, you know, fine of, I don't know, we had another three hundred hours or something, you know, on the site of the ordinance, so that people realize that it's still, it isn't a big deal.
So, will that have three of them made, right?
Yeah, is it three of them made?
Yeah, sort of on two of your motion, by the way.
Yeah, and then the one down here.
You're moving one through the other end?
That's what I was wondering, is he going on Oregon Road?
Seven hundred.
I would think so. I mean, I know there's trucks that if they miss, I don't know.
I've heard them hit J breaks over there, so...
You what?
I've heard them hit brakes over there.
Have you?
It's been a long time, but the one year when they were working over there, I heard them hit them.
Well, if that's the case, we'd have to put one on each end, right? I mean, one at, one on, would you have to put one on... On the highway?
I'm just, you'd want one on the Ocean Highway heading west, because that's probably the most likely where they're headed. You know, like before the hill.
Right.
So, you'd certainly want one on the western way. I don't know that you'd need one...
If you put one on that end before it comes into town, I don't know if you'd need it, would you?
Well, I just, you're gonna want it where it's most needed. But I, Ocean Highway heading east, I don't know that you would care, because, I mean, they're not really hitting the brakes from the east. Certainly coming west, you'd want one, maybe even two, one as you head to town, and one right before the hill or something. So, I mean, you can put however many up you want. It's just put them up where you need them.
Yeah. The big, the big problem is, was before they go over the hill is where they start hitting that. The other one is when they're coming into town, as they're going down that hill, they're hitting that. And I don't know if I've ever heard them hit it coming to town this way, there's not that many trucks coming there. But the other one, I've heard them hit it a couple times, I mean, as they come in, as they come up to that stop sign.
Oh, over by Mike's, yeah, over by Mike's place.
So, yeah, you're telling me, certainly the one through or over.
So, I see that the city basel sign is down. Has she taken it down, or you did?
Larry had me take the sign. Well, they had taken the sign down, but Larry had me pull the post out, because the whole bottom's burned off them, and so at very least, I gotta break the cement off, get the plastic off of it, so... We're gonna, we're gonna move it. We're gonna move that sign.
They aren't doing anything about, doing anything?
Nope, she hasn't done nothing yet. Took it off a while back and still in a garage.
Anyway, back on the...
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Back on the...
They actually asked me if I was gonna discontinue having a sign on town, and I said, no, we're just gonna fix it. Well, I thought we were fixing it, and I said, I thought we were fixing it, too.
So, everybody, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I think, I think if we just move it, and it should be clear out of the picture.
There's no grass where you're proposing it to be. There's never been any grass there, so it can't get burnt up now.
Okay, back to the weight limit sign. Do we have to approve how many we're gonna put up now?
No, that's up to you. That's in your budget.
Oh, okay.
Just council just needs to approve the ordinance.
All right, so we need to vote on it then?
Yep, so you need a motion to approve ordinance number...
One thirty-three.
One thirty-three and waive all required agreements.
I make a motion to approve, what was it, ordinance one thirty-three for J breaks?
And waive all required agreements.
And waive all required agreements? And then I just put a little call.
All in favor?
And then I need to publish this, right?
Yeah, to publish that.
And do we need to... Let the Big and Candy Sheriff know what, what the deal is?
Yeah, and actually, once it's published, you'll wanna get them a copy of it, so that they can...
Oh, okay. Save a copy, but we can take down the thing. Guys, got some bad news, I think, on our pumps.
The one big pump that we have, we're ready to have it fixed, it's completely eaten up on the inside, and the armature seems to be damaged too. So, we would have to get the thirty horsepower, so it can't be repaired easy. The twenty-five horse that I pulled out of here, they've taken it down and taken it apart, and the impeller seems to be damaged. They can find, right now, they can find the parts for it, and they supposedly have an impeller that we can put back on it, but they've been over a week and a half trying to get an answer on it. And so, I'm not sure exactly where that's going. The only other pump I know of is, I've checked on three different pumps. The one's ninety-six hundred dollars, the one is about eighty-five hundred dollars, the one's about the same price. The first one is nine weeks out. The second one is twenty-three weeks out, and the other one's fifty-six weeks out. I'm not sure we're gonna be into July, if we, even if we order that one that can come in in nine weeks, that's ninety-six hundred. We're gonna be into July before we ever get a pump back in there for watering town. I'm not sure we shouldn't take that smaller pump and put a VFD on it, which is a six thousand dollar fix on that, but that pump can only go up to about three hundred and fifty gallons per minute on that. Here's another thought that we need to address, is both of them, other two pumps, are the exact same pump that just burned up. The impellers were made with inferior grade when they changed over to brass in two thousand. They took the lead out, and they hadn't put any aluminum in the machine like they do now. That particular type of lead falls apart so easily. We put it in pumps in myself, and we haven't completely fallen apart. So, in the long term, neither one of these other pumps that we got in are long-term very usable. They could fall apart too, just like the one we have. So, the truth of it is, is we really, if this other one works, and we can get it, it'll be up and running. But we all probably oughta order that ninety-six hundred dollar pump, and have it coming in, it'll be nine weeks, and then put the six thousand dollar variable frequency drive on the one we have, so that once the yards come up and start watering, we have water without having to run our big pump constantly. That big turbine pump like that, it has an open shaft in it that's water-driven clean, and they lubricate pretty good, but when they bury, then it has a tendency to wipe out the rubber centering devices. And so, if I keep using it in a variable frequency like this, I could be having to pull it out and repair it. So, we're coming up, we're creating problems, and we've got a series of problems. In the long term, we probably need to replace all three of them pumps, I don't know how soon. But the one we know is no good. The other one that come out of here is almost the same size. It's a twenty-five horse that runs almost five hundred and sixty, five hundred and seventy, almost like six hundred gallons, like that one does. If they can get that impeller, then that one will be up and working. I was checking on the electrical end of it. It's basically the same. It should work in our drive and everything else, if we get it. I don't know how long it's gonna be to get the parts in for it. I've seen this several times with...
How much for the propeller?
Huh? For the impeller, for the, there's a single impeller.
How much was that for this other pump?
They haven't given me a price and everything on fixing this one yet. So, I don't know what that is. It's probably gonna be at least a thousand dollars for the impeller.
Well, what's this six thousand dollars you're talking about?
That's a brand-new thirty horsepower, six hundred and fifty gallon per minute pump to replace the one that burned up.
I thought you said it was nine thousand.
Six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
So, basically, the six thousand dollar one is gonna be a Band-Aid, where the ninety-six thousand dollar one is the solution?
The six thousand dollars is the variable frequency to put out to the ten horsepower that can run up to three hundred gallons per minute, that would help run the city and keep it off the big pump until everybody starts using water. Because we're running only on our big pump right now.
Well, yeah, but...
It's kind of a nightmare that's got worse and worse and worse on me.
Are you sure you don't want to put six thousand dollars into a haunted...
That's gonna burn up?
Yeah.
That's a question. If I've got nine weeks before I get out, that's three months, that's the middle of July, that we're gonna be running on the one pump.
If you have no backup whatsoever? If you went out of town, have you went out of town and tried to get a pump, like Salt Lake or somewhere like that?
I went with the main dealers around here to try to get them, and that's what I found. Most of the pumps, most of the places that make pumps during the COVID shutdown, and they're just tooling back up, starting to make them again. Everything that was available a few years ago is not available, and so you have to have them. Like I said, if I said go, they'll start manufacturing it, and it, nine weeks before it's finished manufacturing, it'd be disastrous. The whole system during the COVID thing shut down, and it's just barely coming back into life, the American side of it. We don't know what's overseas, and I don't know if we, you know. The hard thing is, is I'm having to order something that's municipal, okay?
What do you mean by that?
A ditch pump won't work.
No what?
Ditch pump won't work.
You need to approve first. The one you took out of here?
That one's a municipal pump. They, just a little bit different in the plastics and everything else, and the brass and everything else. It can't have no lead in it for a municipal pump.
So, is that the one you ought to put the six thousand dollars in?
No. No. That's the ten horsepower over there, that's just a very, that's six thousand dollars is just a panel on the wall to run variable frequency, so that if they're only using a hundred gallons a minute, it'll run it, if it can use up to three hundred and twenty, that's all the talk for that goes. It'll run it. That's the one that I said, that during the winter time, it would cost us quite a bit less to run it over a thirty horsepower. And so, but the truth of it is, is it's of that lesser...
It's gonna fall apart.
Yeah, of that, of that two thousand, the two thousand series, when the pump house was born. They, they take, they took all the lead out of them at that point, and didn't put nothing, they didn't know to put nothing in them, and they, they just fell apart all over, and I didn't realize. I had the pump out here, I could have showed it to you, it's got holes, and I was, it's funny, it was even running.
So, basically...
And that's what happened, is when it burned up, it caused the vibration, it caused the bearings to go out, and it swiped the armature in the motor. I can probably take it up to Rosetta and have the armature rebuilt and everything else. I don't know what the price is, but I'm sure you're talking several thousand dollars to have that done. And that's just the motor, and then I still haven't got a new pump for the other end of it. It's, it's a... I don't...
So, can you with...
I've been having stress, worn out, talking to people and stuff, and calling up, and...
Well, I'll ask you this again, is there... How about going out of town and sit and talking to these guys here in Idaho Falls?
I have, there's two different people that I've talked to. Main pump companies and everything else. No, they're, they're, these guys in Idaho Falls are actually dealing with several pump companies back east. There are other ones available, but they could, they haven't given up any information on when they're tooling back up to start making them again.
I don't know, what's the answer?
Our nation's in a strange place right now.
What's that?
Our nation is in a strange place right now.
You're telling me.
We just happen to fall into a trap here. I don't know the answers. I just know what I know. If I can get the impeller, then that pump's back online, and we're out of trouble to some extent, okay, on that one. Then we have two pumps back in this. If we have problems with one, we're shut completely down and down. With our big pump. That's what's terrible.
Who are you doing about?
Huh? Who are you doing about? H. D. Fowler is talking with, they had checked with, um... Can't remember the name of the pump. We've checked with three different pump companies, international pump companies, on that one. The guy down in Blackfoot that does, that was repairing it, he'd had checked with several of them online, and they had only found one, and that was the fifty-six week out. And then they had found one more that was just an impeller, or just a set of, a pump, that was twenty-three weeks out, before they could ever get up and manufacture it. And then I had talked to the irrigation place up there, and we talked it over, and they said, well, we don't have that type of pump. And I, and I know a lot about pumps, and so I've kind of been asking them questions myself, so... I went to the main distributors. The places that the pump guys buy from, I went to the main distributors, so...
You don't know how good a shape the hard big pump is?
This one, that was up here?
No.
Oh, that one's running fine. I've been over and checked it. It's running fine. But... If it had an oil tube, I can say it with one for years. We can't have oil tubing a water system. So, it just has, runs water back down, and it's got a set of water bearings in it. And these water bearings, if anything happens at all, they go out, and then I have to jerk the pump out and have a new set. There's a spider on the inside of the inside column, and it's just circulating water back down it. The water is the lubricant, and as long as everything's working good, it works pretty good. But if the pressure goes up and down, the press, the water that's going in, it could cause it to vibrate, and it could cause it to wear out. It's just, it shouldn't happen, but it can happen. I'm just saying it can happen. I know how pumps work, that's why I'm saying it can happen. Right now, it's working fine.
Well, what's...
Not just carry it, it's working fine.
What's the council think?
I think we should get the one that's nine weeks out at least.
I agree.
And I think we need to make sure we have a backup.
I've been holding my breath that they would come up with, we've got the impeller, but they still haven't. I've been waiting two weeks now. Well, we've got it ordered, we've got it ordered. They haven't got back to us, haven't got back to us. So, I don't know, they don't know. The guys that are working on it don't know. They said, well, it's available, but, but, and then, well, we haven't got it yet, haven't got, haven't got the information yet. And so, I'm sitting there holding my breath, trying to, but that's...
Well, there's this chance they may not get it, so I think I'm gonna pay them, should just buy the ninety-six hundred dollar one. Because we're gonna be right back here when the other two eventually fail on us.
The what now?
The other two will eventually gonna fail.
The other two are eventually gonna fail, because they were made in that series, that timeframe. And so, in time, if we're gonna use them very much, they're gonna, I don't know what the inside of them looks like. I do know that my forty horsepower started leaking, and I haven't used it very much, and I'm worried about it, now that I know what happened to the thirty horsepower, so...
They better just start replacing them now.
So, are you saying that there's one in there that needs a replacement part to keep going?
Just to put it up back on, because the impeller has, has got pencil thin. What was in here, this whole system, used to have a lot of sand in it, and we had sand that was going into town, and that's part of the reason why this went out. And this original impeller was starting to get paper thin, and a piece of it broke off. And I didn't know that it was broken until I got it down there and repaired. And then I was down there looking at it, and I was thinking, man, that's paper thin, and then this piece is gone and everything else. But supposedly, that older series has replacement parts. The new ones that are, this pump house over here has totally been discontinued. There is no replacement parts. You can't even get seals. That type has been totally discontinued, and it's no longer on the market, period.
Boy, somebody figured that out, didn't they?
That's just what they sold in two thousand. They was changing, California passed the lead laws, and they changed the lead laws and everything.
The California, oh, it's that state.
That's what made brass last a long time, is lead in it. The original impellers, put in before that, if they didn't have sand or anything else, they're still working. Them ones there are a bit bad. The new ones that we're getting out now are better. They don't, they're not falling apart. They're tougher, like they're supposed to be. I don't know what the long term is.
Yeah, if you got ten thousand dollars.
What is, by peeing you straight down during your system, what is a woman during your system? You know the answers?
Is that something I can't hear?
Yeah, I was just, guy in my office is American.
Can we still send stuff? I can't remember what it is.
Is that in here?
The pump house down there in Blackfoot that I was dealing with.
My brother's guys might come in.
Stacks of pumps in there.
Is that something that was used?
Because I, I, I don't remember what the, he said we could put stuff like that on there.
I'd say we can have that.
Pump experience, what's your suggestion that we do?
Wish I knew about that one, but if it was leaving to me and the situation we're in, I'd say order the ninety-six hundred dollar pump and get it on the way. Because we still got nine weeks in the day we order it.
Well, yeah, but you, you just said a minute ago that we don't have a backup.
We don't have one now.
So, if we don't order it, it goes out?
Exactly, we don't have one now.
So, the only, the only thing we can do for a backup is to put that six thousand thousand dollar variable frequency drive on the ten horse, so we have a backup that would keep us in water. It may be restricted the whole town, but that would keep us in water in an emergency.
And that's a...
That VFD could be on within the week.
How, again, that's what I was gonna ask you, how... Say if our big pump goes down, and you decide to do that...
If that, if we do that, I'd still, it'd still be down for a week if I didn't have ordered, okay, I'm ready to put in or putting it in right now. If we get the VFD in, I would switch over to that and just have it so that that VFD on the big pump already comes on and drives if they exceed the three hundred and twenty gallons that that pump's capable of.
And that's gonna cost?
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand dollars.
And then if we had the other pump, we still have ninety-six hundred on top of that if we're gonna order the other one.
Okay, what is it?
And then we still have a little bit of the electrician to hook them up. The six thousand has got that added into it. That's hookup and everything. In fact, it might come in a little lower than that. But the ninety-six hundred dollar pump is still gonna have a little bit of electrical cost.
So, if they find that propeller down there, or whatever you call it...
Then that could be on, and we don't need the nine thousand dollar pump.
Do we still wanna get that?
But we don't theoretically need it right now. That's what I was hoping. When I found out the other one burned up, I jerked this one out, went down and started having to work on it, so... And I, I was only a week and a half from the time I'd taken the first one in, and they'd been, they'd been down there for a month trying to figure out the parts and everything else on it, so...
Well, they ordered a new exhaust system for my bus.
The what?
They ordered a new exhaust system because my, for my bus, it fell apart. And that was three weeks ago. And he ordered it out of Centerville, and they said they had it. He just got it today. So, that, I mean, that's...
Yeah, that's just coming here again.
Yeah, that's the way parts are, I mean, it's, with everything.
That's the way everything is.
Yeah. Okay, it's up to the council. What do you think?
I'm still leaning ninety-six.
I think with the ninety-six, I wouldn't mind using the six thousand to get that. And then when that other thing comes in, if you can get it repaired, still the ninety-six hundred.
About no matter what, whenever I order the other pump, it's gonna take nine weeks or ten weeks for them to tool it up and make it and run it to me.
Yeah, and if one of these go out...
But the other, the other, the six thousand would make us have secondary pumps, so that we could have the two pumps, we could drill that one there for now, and shut the big one down, and be running a lesser pump until everybody starts watering in town. Unless I restock town on water.
Yeah, good luck on that.
Yeah, at least if you had the back, if you got, I think you almost have to have that backup. I mean, because if you, everybody's pretty quick on water, but if you had toilets and sinks down there.
So, if you get this one for six thousand up and running, okay? And then we order that other one, what would you do? Pull this six thousand out?
No, that will stay in place. That will stay in place. And then we could consider that that pump is long-term, it's gonna be going away, something's gotta be replaced on it, okay? But for now, it could work, and even during the winter time, because the other one lasted, what, twenty years? And it might last so many years sitting there using it like that, and so instead of running that BFD, I could run that one and have this thirty horsepower shut off, so during the winter time, you could actually be cutting your electrical costs down for the winter time for the use of electricity. So, that BFD on this ten horse would actually be a reduction in electrical cost, not a big one, but a decent reduction in electrical cost for the winter time, because the other thirty horsepower has to run all the time during the winter time, and the cost, whether it's high amps or low amps, is similar, but not quite as much as if it's high amps, you bump up the price a little.
Well, this new pump you're gonna order, how big's that?
Thirty horse. Just exactly, thirty horse, six hundred and fifty gallons per minute, it's, it's exactly the same as what originally was in.
Is that big enough?
That's what we've had for a lot of time, yeah. That's about where the town runs out, between three and six hundred gallons. When everybody gets to sprinkling, we'll get up into the five, six hundred. We have been as high as seven and eight hundred a few times and had both pumps running. When everybody hot in July, everybody's gotta have it on the garden, everybody's gotta have the green grass, you know?
So, I'm coming to death. So I'm coming to dance, I'm sure everybody figured that out. If you order that expensive pump and it comes in, you're not gonna put it in, you're not gonna use it?
No, no, we would go ahead and put it in, um, because that's a rad new pump and it wasn't really good. That's, if this one here continues not to get here, this one that twenty-five horse, and that twenty-five horse will work on our thirty horse B F D that's over there variable frequency drive. It'll work on it fine and handle it fine. If that one comes in, that's like they were saying, maybe our best issue right now is take the B F D for the ten horse, put it on so it's running, it's in a, within a week or so we could be up to running. And then still stall out and order it. And if that don't come in within a week or two, then get the other one ordered and then we still got the drive, but then that puts us the last July before that thirty horsepower would come in.
I, if you're gonna order it, I think we order it now, don't wait.
Well, if you order it and it comes, can't you still use that old one and, cause it could go out anytime and then we've got one.
Well, he said it's just a matter of time.
That one, if the old one gets repaired, and I don't expect a whole bunch of money, you know, a thousand or two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars to have the old pump re- completely repaired. In fact, I don't think it's gonna be that much, I'm not sure. But if we have that old one repaired, then it could be sitting in the building as a reserve pump. And we could, if the forty horse needs replaced, I could pull the forty horsepower out. The forty horse was basically a fire protection device. When it kicks on, it can exceed a thousand gallons a minute. And our other pump, it was set up originally before we had the other pump set up. So now if we need it, this pump can come on, that pump can come on. And between the two, we can produce about seventeen hundred gallons a minute. You could have two or three cars in town going at the same time and exceed all their needs with that, with the system originally the way I set it.
Well, I think you get that new pump ordered.
Get the new pump ordered?
Now.
And what about the V F D over there, no, or yes? Yes?
You gotta have a backup.
Okay.
It shall be done.
Thank you.
So don't, don't wait a week.
No.
Or three or four days, get it ordered.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, cause they're telling you nine weeks, but who knows, it might be, it might be, it might be three months.
Because I worry that this one may make us a lot.
It might be four months.
Not like the other, the one that's supposed to become right in like that, it was a little cheaper. It was fifty-six weeks, I'm going, how many weeks is in it here?
Two.
Fifty-two?
So that's what I'm saying.
Hey, Guy, I got another question for you. What's our ponds look like?
Um, they're pretty good. They're like that, down.
Boy, that south pond looked to me like from the road up there, it looked like it was ready to run over.
Um, no, it looks pretty good, I was down there looking at it. Less a whole bunch of water's gone into it that I didn't see, no. It looks pretty good, last time I was looking at it, which I haven't been down there for probably two weeks. So, but last time I was down there, it was down quite a bit. It needs to be burned around.
So you think we're all right there?
It sounded like the water was running first time I heard it. Floating over.
Hey, Guy, are any of those pump parts coming from China?
From China?
No. Good.
No, it's all American. We can't get nothing from China right now. It's all has to be retooled up and brought in from America. That's the problem is they're retooling.
That's what I just said.
They're, they're start, they're starting them up from shutdown, from the corner.
Cause China's shutting down again now.
It's...
Hey, Guy?
Guy?
I got, I got Biden's personal number, I'll call him, I'll call him in the morning and see if he can't get us a pump from Russia. It was a joke.
I've been, I've been asking questions for Billy, he's trying to get to this answer, so I'm sorry.
All right. Um, let's see. So I'm just wondering where we're gonna have to get that money from and take to that? How much we've got, you know how much we've gotten in general fund?
We've got that grant money that we got, so there's...
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay. I wanted to take a couple of rooms this summer, too.
I was hoping we could fix some roads, but then you're just patching them and trying to get away for another year.
Guy, will you patch the hole in Biden's stop sign?
What?
Will you patch that crater that's...
Biden's stop sign? You're gravel or asphalt?
Um, I would say asphalt, it's a weird, very...
That means they'll drag off in your mortal yard a little bit more, you know that? I'll put asphalt there.
That's right, it's, well, cause you got the hole, you got the people's stop...
Whenever they put asphalt in there, then they pull off the road a little more.
They do, but it's better than backing out and then like...
I've got some, I was about ready to go down and dig a little bit more because this road has deteriorated a lot. And I was gonna dig it out and fill some zips in this road that goes down that way, but...
Yeah, in about a week it's gone from this big...
Several bad spots though, that's gotta have the whole area and...
Wish we could do something to keep people from getting corners.
I told Jason today I'm gonna put a nail strip out on my yard so they can drive on my yard.
The bigger the corner you make, the more they ride off the road. And the bigger the corner, you fill them holes up and they drive off the road more.
Well, they don't even stop, I'm not even stopping at my stop sign. It's just a gradual blur and then when they, once they get around, they hit it.
The only good thing about the holes is they stop because they...
Well, one today about we hit the back of Rayo's car because they were trying to avoid the pothole and were dragging the yard, so that's why I know Jason...
I've fixed a few potholes in town so far, but I didn't get over to your, uh, I did get your light fixed, is that better?
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you. I'm appreciating that a lot this summer when I am out watering my flowers at night at ten o'clock, so yeah.
Maybe you oughta take the back hole over there. You think it'd help to dig that hole out and put some good base in the bottom of it before you put the asphalt hole? Yeah. Or not, no?
If I dig it out, then it doesn't settle down right and I don't have a compactor, so I'm better off just filling it full and then take, then digging against the road or on the side, but kinda just put my fat and then put a berm upon the edge of it. They'll still slide off the edge of it.
Well, you, you're gonna have to wait till it puts rain and the snow and so that'll...
Can I do it in the middle of the snow?
So that, so that hole will dry out, aren't you?
Um, this actually, you can put this, this cold mix down right in the middle of it, as long as I can get it to roll. And it's people driving over it is what knocks it down, it's that to them, yeah, dude. And I, like I said, I was gonna go get another yard or two right now, cause I, I have a lot. I've got a pile over there and I was using it, but I'd need, I'd need to fix this road and it's gonna take a yard or two by itself, the one that goes this way from this end of the road. It's really, that's really, right?
It is. You can't avoid the potholes at this point.
Yeah, you can't.
And she's like, which one are you gonna hit?
It doesn't matter, you're...
It's all seventy-two, it ran real fast last winter.
And then you get people going in those people's yards if you're not careful, because people are trying to, you can see people are cutting that corner and going in their yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Just like what's happening here.
Is that they just keep coming?
I haven't seen that pothole, I tell me your stop sign every day.
You haven't seen it? It's huge.
I have.
It is huge.
You might be the, the one percent that actually goes out to the road and then looks and stops and then goes to the road, but you've got the majority that's like, here's the stop sign, and they look clear back here. And so they're just like cutting it like, I mean, they're not even on the road. It's not even on the road, yeah, it's bad. So, yeah.
I guess it's good that they do it right, that they do it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so do we need to vote on it?
No, that's in your budget, that's just an input item.
I assume maintenance, yeah, if you guys decide, then we do it and we try to figure out how to do it, how to pay for it.
Wow.
She'll be able to tell us, hey, when she says, we need fifteen thousand dollars? Across my road budget.
Yeah. Did you get any money out of it?
They're supposed to do it afterwards.
Oh, okay.
So let's, we should contact Mike and ask him again what, I, I can't remember, he did a really good presentation, see if we can get this done and...
Yeah, the guy that...
You worked there last week, we talked about getting this, oh, I wish I could remember, my brain was just fuzzy right now.
It's an all-hazard, uh, program for the county.
Yeah, and so we can ask for all these things like on our wishlist to get grant money. If, I can't remember, it was, I'll have to think about it. They couldn't talk to us, I told us we could add it, we'd get on this list, that's all I can remember right now.
You're...
My brain's just not working right now. So I'll have, we'll contact him and see if we can still add things to our list.
Yeah, I think we can until, if you got some time, to like, almost until the end of May or end of year.
Yeah, cause they had a whole bunch of grant money and they could get in on it. And there was a whole bunch of stuff that we wanted to, right? That's all I can remember. Anyway.
Yeah, I think we should.
I agree.
Well, supposedly there's supposed to be some direct money available, like if we wanna build another pond down there or something like that, there's supposed to be...
I think that kind of fell into that same area. Cause he said we were able to make all these, you could make it work into this thing that he was doing.
Cause Huck talked about that, uh, that there was money available.
Cause they have a whole bunch of money right now.
Yeah. In fact, Huck was supposed to put our name on the list, uh, whatever that means, so...
I, I can't remember, so...
Yeah, okay. Well, you can, wanna check into that or?
Yeah, I'll just email and see if we could still put things on the list and then we'll see what he says.
Oh, okay, all right. Did you hear something?
No, I, I was just kind of interested in how everything went here. I, for some reason I've been getting the notifications of the videos, when they get posted, but I can't hear that gun on my phone. Someone come?
Oh, okay. Well, thanks for coming.
Yeah, it's just kind of, you know, interesting. And we're, um, so we used to live in Idaho Falls, you know, it's a bigger city, but I figured, hey, you know, smaller town.
Yeah.
Anyway, if I raise my hand every now and then, say, someone will hear.
All right, is there anything else? Anybody got?
Uh, just one little point on grants and stuff, those are two separate grants, the one that Huck was talking about and the one from the county are two, were two different ones. Plus there are other, there are hundreds of grants out there the city can be applying for, you just gotta look for them.
You have to find somebody who's willing to write them for you.
Yeah.
That's the key.
I mean, it might, it might be advantageous for the city actually to find a grant writer and to, all right, and to have them sort of like a per, per basis contract and say, all right, we need a grant for this and this, cause a lot of the grant writers keep their fingers up and they know where the grants are anyways.
Oh, I know the grant writers. I've worked at grants for twenty years, I can tell you where the grant writers are.
Okay, well, we don't need one with you on board, do we?
Oh, yes you do, cause I'll never write a grant. I've worked with Grant and I'll never do it again.
Oh, okay.
I just feel, I dealt with the money in the grants, I dealt with getting the grants, but I'll never write a grant.
Well, it pointed us in the right direction.
So I've got a lady who's really good, brought in a ton of money for the agent she, she used to work for, if you guys want, I can give you guys her name and I'll clear up with her before I do it. You guys can talk to her, she'll write you a grant, but I don't want them to do a free grant or anything like that.
How expensive would that be?
I have no idea what she charges. She's just a friend.
Yeah.
She's been, I, she, she just recently started working for somebody in Wyoming, writing grants for them, so I have no idea what she'll charge.
She must be on the ball if she's doing that.
She's gotten a lot of big grants.
Yeah. Well, if you get a chance, talk to her.
Yeah, just text her.
See, maybe we oughta get on board on that.
Yeah, cause I guarantee you, there's plenty of grants out there. It's just getting somebody to go out, find it and write it.
Yeah.